Right on the second.
Is that right? Nathan, we okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners for May 3, 2017, and may I have a roll for please?
Here.
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 Here. May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to apologize to my fellow commissioners. I sent an email out earlier today stating that the purpose of this meeting was to ratify the contract for the new township manager, and that was an error. It should not be ratified, but to approve the contract of the new township manager. So with that, I'll read the motion, and the motion on the floor will be to approve the employment agreement between the Township of Abington and Richard J. Manfredi to serve as township manager beginning May 4, 2017, and I say move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and at this time, I'll ask for comments from commissioners. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Thanks so much for making the changes that you did. I just have a couple of questions. Unfortunately, I'm not numbered. I don't think I am. Section 5, hours of work, Part B.
The employee must devote a great deal of time outside of the normal office hours to
business of employer. I'm confused by "a great deal of time." Should that be more defined? I'm not even sure who I'm talking to. Mr. President, I'm probably talking to you. Should it be more defined, employee must devote a great deal of time?
You repeat that. I don't know if counsel heard the question.
I did. I did not know if you wanted me to respond to it or not.
Yes, if you would, please.
Well, the reason we use language like that is that it's impossible to sort of put a particular number on it, to say employee must devote 10% of their time, 15% of their time, because it will vary from time to time. I think what history and practice shows most municipalities is that a manager, perhaps more than any other employee of the township with the possible exception of a chief of police, is called upon to work a significant amount of hours outside of the 8:30 to 4:30 or the 9 to 5. That there are a lot of meetings that will occur at night, like these meetings, like committee meetings, like finance committee meetings, like budget committee meetings, or there may be additional times when other matters are occurring. There may be things that are on weekends. So when language like this is used, it is generally used for the idea of expressing that there is an acknowledgement that a fair amount of time, a great deal amount of time, a lot of time, whatever phrase you want to use, is spent outside of the normal 9 to 5 working hours or 8:30 to 4:30. It's impossible to put a specific percentage or a specific number in there. That's why you use a general phrase like "great deal of time."
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Myers?
I'll do mine, but if anybody else?
Okay. I don't see any other hands, so, okay. And after Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Zepone. Go ahead.
Well, I agree on that, on B, that there's an expectation, and if everybody's comfortable with that, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it out that it's very gray, and it could be challenged at some point, what is a great deal of time. And if a manager started missing meetings but felt they had already devoted a great deal of time, that's where it could be challenged. But if everybody's comfortable, I'm not, that's not a biggie for me. On Section 7, Letter A, this allows the manager to carry over vacation time, but the employee policy is you cannot carry over vacation time. It's use it or lose it. Do we want to be consistent with the Employee Manual, the Salary and Clerical Employee Handbook, or is this a special case?
Okay. Counsel, you want to weigh in on that?
Again, I believe this, Mr. President, and this was what was discussed with Mr. Manfredi between Commissioner Klein and yourself. I believe this was negotiated with your manager, your chief executive of the township. A specific employment agreement like this will supersede the Employee Handbook. So the fact that this may be above or beyond what the Employee Handbook says, as long as it's negotiated and approved by a majority of the board, this will be what is in force and effect. Specific agreements will always trump a, in a general, non-negotiated Employee Handbook.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Well, I think it's important that the rest of the commissioners understand that this differs from the Employee Handbook. I mean, we could write a contract saying anything, but if you want to keep it consistent with all of the other employees of the township, that's what should be done. So it is a use it or lose it policy, but again, if no one's taking issue with that...
And again, I think, just two things I'd like to point out. One, and I don't want to get picky on over a term, but it's not a contract. It's an agreement. There's a difference. There's a little bit of a difference of the legal impact by calling it a contract as opposed to an agreement. And again, that is a negotiated term, which can differ from the Employee Handbook. That is a decision among the board. This agreement does not have to follow the Employee Handbook.
Okay. Commissioner Klein, Vice President Klein, you had a comment to Commissioner Myers' comment.
Well, just something that I can tell you from the conversations we had. There was talk about, in our conversations with Mr. Manfredi, about the fact that the contract would be slightly different than the employees', and he actually, I think there was an effort to continue to have that because the manager is also responsible for negotiating contracts, and it has been tradition that the negotiated contracts are what is generating the manager's benefits or salaries or salary increases, and we thought it was a better idea to have some separation there. It was also worth saying that the personal time is not accrued, whereas employees are allowed to accrue personal time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on that question from Commissioner Myers?
I have a question.
Commissioner Schreiber.
So the current manager has accrued personal and not vacation. Is that correct?
Yes. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Any other, I think Commissioner Zepone, you had a question?
Yeah. On that working hours, B, 4B, yeah, B. The current contract that we have with this township manager now, it says, because of the duties of the manager...
Could you pull the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Because of the, this is the current contract in place. Because of the duties of the manager often require more than 40 hours per week. This one says devote a great deal of time. So once there's a great deal of time, this is very specific here. So I don't, what is the, I mean, the language here is different.
So the whole section of the existing manager's contract, to be fair, says because of the duties of the manager often require more than 40 hours per week and are not amenable to regular work hours to the extent compatible with the fulfillment of the duties of the manager. The manager may schedule his own work hours rather than work in a regularly scheduled eight-hour block of time. I would say that it is about as detailed as the paragraph in the existing, in the proposed manager agreement. Yeah, the whole paragraph.
Okay. And just a few comments. Another reason why I voted no for this contract is because, and we keep saying it was negotiated, it was negotiated, but we didn't really get to see this agreement until like a week after he was hired. And I don't understand, how could you hire somebody and you don't know what's in the contract or agreement? That just blows my mind.
Can I have a comment?
For clarification, Commissioner Zepone, the contract was not, or excuse me, now I just did it. The agreement was not negotiated until after the vote was taken to hire Mr. Manfredi on April 13th. So this document that you have in front of you did not exist prior to April 13th when he, there was a vote to hire them, hire him. I think when the vote was taken that night, part of the motion was also that the president, vice president, and the solicitor would then negotiate the contract with Mr. Manfredi. I think much of what is in here is pretty standard contract language. The amount of vacation time or the amount of salary, things along those lines, are obviously things that had to be negotiated, but this wasn't negotiated. This document didn't exist until after April 13th of 2017.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Glesby.
Yeah. Something that's kind of really bothered me is I just was able to print this new version out, so as I flew in the house from work, so I haven't really even had a chance. I did see that there were changes, but I really haven't had a chance to look at this. And some of the changes that I did see, I couldn't even, I couldn't understand why they weren't correct in the beginning, so it kind of, you know, I haven't really had a chance to look at this new version.
Well, they weren't necessarily changes. Some of those were agreed upon.
Well, there was a list. I mean, I saw this big, and then I printed out a new one, so I just wanted you to know where I'll be coming from.
Well, we tried to get input and make some tweaking adjustments, so they weren't changes per se. We just tried to get a compromise or agreement as to some language. But like the attorney said, it's pretty standard stuff.
I think a tweak is a change, though, Wayne.
Sorry?
I think a tweak is a change. That was pretty little...
Right. Okay. Are there any other comments?
The job description, was this, did he have this during the interviews? Because there's, commissioners weren't involved in the interviews. Did he see his job description, or is he going to get it now?
I think the job description of the township manager is on the...
Website, isn't it?
Website.
Right.
I do not know if the applicants were provided with copies of the job description ahead of time, and I do know that where in Mr. LeFevere's contract, the job description was incorporated within the contract, the job description has been taken out as, it's not incorporated into the contract. But I don't know if any of the applicants had a copy of the job description.
Were any of the applicants asked if they reviewed the job? That's normal when you're hiring somebody.
I was not part of the interview process.
When you're interviewing for a job, you review the job descriptions to see if you have the qualifications. And this troubles me that, you know, we're a first-class township, the second largest in the county, and this gentleman doesn't have the credentials for that. So my thing is, did he see this and review this?
I wasn't part of the...
I'm just asking, Mike.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, he has seen this whole, he's seen this whole document.
Oh, as far as afterwards, yes, yes. I meant before the interview process.
Did he see this prior to him, you know, like, all the applicants that came, what did we have, 15 or 16? Did they all know, were they directed, go on site and look at the job description and review that? Because they may go and say, oh, number four, I don't have that qualification, or number seven, I don't have that qualification. That's normally what you do. Because in my time, I hired and discharged a ton of managers, and that's the policy. So I want to know if this was, were they told to go online and look this over and review it and see if they matched the qualifications? There's a lot of places, if you don't have the qualification, let's say college or whatever, they just, it's just tossed. So that's a question I have.
You had a comment, Commissioner Spiegelman?
No, actually, yeah. Commissioner Hecker.
Hecker, Commissioner, Tom Hecker.
I just want to get clarification on the process, because from my understanding, a bipartisan subcommittee of commissioners reviewed the qualifications of each applicant and decided who to bring in for interviews.
Correct.
And so it was a bipartisan subcommittee of commissioners. Yeah, there were, yes.
Five to two.
So there, both parties were represented on that subcommittee, and we all know that at the end of the first interview process, there was unanimity among the subcommittee.
Did anybody in the bipartisan process ask...
Proportionately, proportionately, there was equal representation.
Our colleagues reviewed the credentials.
Yeah, I'm asking. Anybody want to panel?
Our colleagues reviewed the qualifications and brought in the candidates based on...
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yeah, to answer the question, the answer is yes. Everyone who applied had, there was, you know, in the posting, there was sort of a basic, a basic description of the job, and everyone who applied had, you know, certainly a sense of, you know, of a township manager's job. The first task of the seven members of the committee was to filter through the applications and do basically the first, the first pass filtration, which, you know, which we, no, I don't want to say we did that, that sounds a little insulting, but ultimately sort of filtered out, you know, more than half of the applications, and the others came through for the interview process, and then we interviewed and we asked specific questions about, we had questions about their resume, about their qualifications, fill-in-the-blanks questions, you know, we even asked everybody, you know, where do you feel your, you know, your strongest and weakest areas are? And then based on that, we unanimously decided on the three applicants who moved forward to the full board interview process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Okay. Not a question, a suggestion. On Section 11, professional development, Letter B, the very last line, I would suggest that we take out the $4,000 and replace that with the term like budgeted amount. Because we don't know from year to year what our budget is going to look like, and I don't think that we should commit 4,000. It may be more, it may be less, but I think that that's something that we should, should be part of the budget every year, the discussion process.
Okay. Duly noted. Any other comments from commissioners? Any comments?
I would be willing to make that amendment when the time comes for that Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Any comments from staff? Any comments from the public?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So you've taken out the 40 hours a week and replaced it with lots and lots of time. Did you take...
Actually, that's incorrect. It was taken out of the second portion of the, but the A, 5A specifically says that he will work no less than 40 hours a week.
Okay. So 5A says no less than 40 hours a week, but it is expected in there that he will work more than 40 hours a week? Does it say that in there? Is there an expectation that he will work more than that in that contract? We haven't had the privilege of seeing it, thank you very much. I'm not sure why the public is not allowed to see that. Was it in the documents? I didn't see it in the documents tonight. Was it in the documents? Does anybody know if the contract, the agreement was in the documents, available to the public?
I don't understand your question. Was it available to the public?
My question is, was the agreement that some commissioners got moments before arriving in the document package available to the public, in any way available?
As far as I know, it has not been posted.
To the public before this meeting?
No.
Okay. So we're coming in blind here. So my next question was, in the prior document, it said that the manager is expected to work longer hours, okay? In a paragraph quite underneath that, it said, he may rearrange his schedule so as not to do it in eight-hour blocks of time. So basically, they were saying in the first contract that you're expected to work more than the 40-hour, a typical 40-hour week, but in essence, the second paragraph gave him the option to take comp time for anything that was over the 40 hours. So I'm asking whether that is also in this. Does he have the option to take comp time and rearrange his eight-hour blocks? Because if you talk about eight-hour blocks, you're talking about five eight-hour blocks a 40-hour week with no expectation that at a manager's salary, which I'm sure, and what is the amount?
Well, that's the kind of job, Ms. Lehman. You can't say a nine-to-five job. There's hours in the evening, there's hours on the weekend. To try to pitch and hold this to a 40-hour week, I think you're just wasting a lot of time.
Well, I'm not wasting time. I'm explaining to you that the...
The demands on the job are probably 60 hours a week in some cases.
Okay. So what I'm explaining to you is that in the 60-hour a week in some cases that you're allowing the previous manager may have had, he also was given the option basically to take comp time, which does not make it. So the amount of the salary...
That's not in the old agreement, and that's not in this one.
Let me finish, Mr. Klein.
That's not in the old agreement, and that's not in this one.
Let me finish, Mr. Klein, please.
Go ahead.
Okay? Which basically is, the amount of the salary then becomes germane, which a manager's salary is usually a more than $100,000 salary because they are expected to be there for evenings and events and so on. And so if you make it a longer time, and you say you're expected to go beyond the 40 hours, but then you say you can take comp time for anything over the eight-hour block and rearrange your schedule, you're basically back to paying a manager's salary with expected overtime for a job with no overtime. You get to take comp time. So that's my question. What is the amount?
There is no comp time provision in this agreement, nor was there comp time provision in the previous...
He was allowed to rearrange his eight-hour, his day in non-eight-hour blocks. That, to me, is an invitation...
Your terminology is incorrect. That's not comp time.
Well, it's an invitation, basically, to assume you have an eight-hour block that you can rearrange how you like. So I think that was pretty clear. What is the amount, please?
You got the answer, ma'am. Your three minutes are up.
The amount of the salary, please? I've asked that about five times in here.
173.
173?
Yep, that's what the current manager makes.
So a $30,000 advance over what he's making in the previous job, right? He's making 140 now?
I don't know what he's making now, but he's making the same thing that the existing managers make now.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? If they're on, there's a motion on the floor. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Wait, wait. No, I have an amendment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to amend Section 11, Part B, to take out the $4,000 and replace that with language of budgeted amount.
I'll second that.
Just a question here, Mr. President. Does, I mean, do we, I can't even, do we budget specifically for the manager's professional expenses? I can't remember the line item. I'm just going to throw that to Kevin, but I don't see him.
We do budget for conference, and, I mean, there is a budget line item in the, there is a budget line, there is a line item in the budget under administrative section for conference and training expenses.
But specific to the manager, or he...
It's, it's for the administrat, it's for the administration portion of the budget.
But it's not, it's not specific to the manager, to that position solely?
It's not specific to the manager.
So that, so, I mean, so this actually, I think, may restrict it more if that budgeted amount, I mean, I understand what you're getting at, Commissioner Myers, but if that budgeted amount is, say, 10,000 for the, for the administration's educational expenses...
Well, each department has a budgeted amount.
Right. But this is for the, this provision's for the manager specifically at 4,000, so that's like a determined amount.
Commissioner Sanchez, I'm not saying it should be more or less or the same. I think that each year, the budget would determine that. I mean, it used to be more. Maybe it will be more again. I mean, we want people to have training and go to conferences and find out what the latest thing is going on. So I'm not, I'm not trying to lower the amount at all. I just want it to be a little more fluid with that budget of that year. That's all.
Commissioner Roth.
Do we have this specific amount included in order to require the township manager to attend a certain amount of training? And if the answer is no to that, by putting the $4,000 in there, if there is no purpose in it, then I understand what Commissioner Myers is saying, but if there's some other motivation for it, then I think it may be that we're not, as a collective unit, aware of why that's there, and there may be a purpose to it. Otherwise, I would certainly have no objection to us being able to be flexible with it and change that language. At the same time, we certainly have the ability as a board to provide more money if it ever is requested, so I'm not sure that it's that essential that we change this, but I'm just wondering if there's a purpose, why this amount is included there.
Okay. Any other comments on the amended motion by Commissioner Myers?
And maybe my question is directed to the solicitor, if he's aware if there's any reason that we need to put anything in there in that form.
So there's a, I'm looking at the 2017 budget, and there was the training and conference, the training expenses for the manager. It is actually, hold on one second. Before I speak, let me just clarify something.
So while you're looking at that, Michael, can I ask you a question? This is just an agreement, so it's not a contract. We can change or look at this at any time?
Within the parameters of the term, one of the things that is, that is different from the existing agreement is this now complies with the First Class Township Code, where the prior manager's agreement did not comply with the First Class Township Code. So this needs to be reviewed at every, at reorganization in the years following a municipal election.
So every two years.
Every two years.
Every two years.
So every, so every time you, you know, can, raises can be voted, things along those lines, but any renegotiation of it would have to be at that time. So actually, you'll revisit this in...
January.
...January of 2018.
Good. Yeah, I thought that's the way that I understood it, but I wasn't quite sure. Thank you for the...
Budgeted amount, because I didn't finish my, just, I was looking. The budgeted amount was $3,000 for 2017.
$3,000 for 2017. Okay. So was there a second to that motion made by Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Kalanowski, second.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. There's also a line item for association dues and seminars, another 5150. So that would have to be, because that, this also, this line item also includes dues and seminars. So that's 8150 in the budget for 2017. Is currently in the 2017 budget. This would limit him to, limit him to $4,000 without coming back to the board specifically.
So it'd be less than what the current manager had?
Well, less than what's in the budget.
Right. Less than what's in the budget, man.
So how would that be budgeted next year? So, you know...
I guess it's a budget for $4,000.
Yeah. I would say...
Yeah. So, I mean, we have a motion on, we have an amendment on the floor, so...
There's amendment on the floor, and it was seconded by Commissioner Farron.
No, it was Commissioner Kalanowski's second. They sound the same.
Okay.
They sound the same.
For clarity, this vote is to accept the amendment. Not, this vote is to accept the amendment, not to approve the contract as amended. It is to accept the amendment.
The amendment. And the amendment is, just for clarification, to replace the amount of 4,000 to budgeted amount.
And the budgeted amount is 3,000?
Well, if you go off of what the description is, one is for training, and the other, the training budget was 3,000, and then the association dues and seminars was another 51, $5,150.
Can I ask the solicitor a question? Would that be a different wording than what's in the current contract? The dues and fees are different than, it's worded here as continued professional development, including attendance at annual conferences and such similar, blah, 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 which, I think the understanding is that it would require possibly dues, but that's not explicit? So do those two items remain separate as 3,000 and, in this case, 5,000, whatever? Or would they be lumped under this 4,000 together?
So, I'll just read you the description and the budget. So, under association dues and conventions, it says membership dues and subscriptions, ICMA 1,100, IPMA personal 270, APMM 350, consortium dues 250, SHRM 180, conferences, ICMA 600, excuse me, 500, APMM 750, PER, PERS 750, economic development, that's, this is for the township, excuse me, this is for the assistant township manager of 500, and then another 500 for miscellaneous newspapers and magazine subscriptions, I guess. So that's in the association dues, that was the fifty-one-fifty, and then there is, excuse me, when, training, it says professional in-house training of administrative staff, $3,000.
Okay.
So, I would say not the whole eighty-one-fifty, is compatible to the 4,000.
Right.
But probably more than the 4,000, I would assume, just based on, the 3,000 just doesn't say anything, it just has one, what I read.
The training.
It's not broken out like the other.
Right.
So this could go either way. Any other comments from commissioners, then? Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to accept the amended motion.
The motion is to accept the amendment to the employment agreement.
I have one other question. I'm assuming that if we vote for this amendment, that it doesn't change the contract in a way that we have to go back and talk to Mr. Manfredi or anything like that?
These are negotiated terms.
And is he going to care, it's only a couple...
So, I would, I would assume that this doesn't fall into the category of a deal breaker.
I would assume not to, but...
Okay, you've heard the motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Show your hands, please, for opposed.
One, two, three, four, five opposed.
All right. So now that, that eliminates any other, the original motion on the floor, correct?
That's, the, now the motion that was made is, it's amended. The board approved the amendment, so now the motion to approve the employment agreement as amended is on the floor.
Okay, so the motion to approve the amended motion is on the floor.
Yeah.
Okay. Got to get a second?
Second.
That's already, that was already seconded.
No, we already have a motion and a second, so, the, all we have now is the, the motion to approve the amended agreement is on the floor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No, and I'd like to give my reasons, so it's on record. I don't, again, I'll reiterate what I say, I don't think this gentleman has the proper credentials. He was hired prior to all the commissioners receiving this agreement, and to me, it's not how to conduct government business, and this is the taxpayer's one we're talking about.
Okay, are there any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none? Special meeting is adjourned. Thank you.